You know, I'm a little frustrated, too. This is such a prime piece of property. And I understand that you're sharing a concept, a conceptual plan to, if I understand you correctly, to be able to market it better. But it would certainly be a whole lot more amenable to me if there was more property here that was reserved for commercial development and not such a huge amount for residentially. It just makes me a little frustrated.
May I address that just for a second?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, in your land development code, and I understand what Councilwoman Matheny's talking about, but all of the information, and I know that's your frustration, is your land development code doesn't call for more. We've provided everything. It's the general purpose and character, the land use by acreage and density, structural concepts, major landscaping concepts, recreation and open space, the housing types, those kind of things we've put in your concept plan, which is what your land development code calls for. And so, we've met all of those requirements. You've got residential in Anthem Park, just to the south. You've got residential in Pine Lakes, to the east. You've got apartments, to the north. You will probably have apartments on the other side as well. You know, what I hear from staff is, "We want more multifamily." We have no multifamily in the city. I've heard that over and over from staff. And so, when we came up with this plan, we were like, "Hey, they want multifamily." They said, "This is a perfect place." So, you know, for, when we, we've in good faith been working with staff for months on this, and to hear that they're not happy now, after they recommended approval, and they've told us, "We want multifamily. We want townhomes. We need these things, and we want them integrated into a plan with commercial, instead of just having, you know, restaurant by restaurant by Walmart, or, you know, by Target, whatever, the big lots." And so, I think it's an opportunity for the city to control your destiny by having a plan. I'm sure, you know, if this doesn't go forward, they'll wait. You know, who knows what, but I think by allowing it to develop on a lot-by-lot basis with the highway business, and not taking an opportunity to plan it as a whole, it's an opportunity lost for the city.
So, let me clarify the record real quick. Staff has been asking for multifamily, and what we got was multifamily and single family. So, just to clarify, we have been asking for multifamily, and we can only ask so much of the applicant, and it's the applicant's decision to decide what it is that they want to propose. So, just to clarify.
Do you want to address that, Joe?
So, that's, that's why when you look at the 1,500, only 200 and some odd were single family, and they're fine to take those out. They're fine just to do the multifamily apartments and the townhomes that attached to, to help meet the need that's presently existing in St. Cloud. There's not a problem with that. And, and you know, that, that feeds into the commercial, even more so than a single family would. And so, they're fine with that. They absolutely have no problem with that.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you. Yeah, I understand completely that what you're presenting is all that we require. That's why I'm asking Mr. Anderson to look at our requirements so that we can get more complete out, because it seems to be a recurring theme, like people are coming and wanting to change land use and zoning, and we just are not feeling comfortable with the amount of detail that we're getting.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I spoke to Ms. Matheny yesterday during her briefing, and I just want to get clarification from council. I think that's a good idea, that we frame these PUDs a little bit better, so we don't have to have these discussions. I mean, we can kind of say, "Here's the parameters we're looking for." So, if you guys will give me a direction, and I can give Mr. Anderson to go ahead and start working on that. He already has.
I already started.
All right, thank you. We thank your staff. It's a great idea. I just wanted the council to, you know, give me the...
Well, I certainly think it'd be wise, that if we had some kind of workshop with the staff and with the council, so that we're on the same page, and we don't feel like we're coming here, and we're going one direction, and they're going another direction, somehow or another, we need to work a little bit better at communicating where we're at.
I don't think, I don't think staff feels that way. I think, I think council does a good job of expressing what their needs are and what their wants are for the community, and I think if you'll just give us direction, we'll come out with a great product for you guys.
Counselor, we're Trace.
And I think, just to wrap up that conversation, once we get the, go through our workshops on the future land use element, you know, wrapping up all of the comprehensive plan elements we've gone over, over the past couple of months, I think it'll really help, and that'll be what uses you want in certain areas. We can, we can kind of map that out for the, for the next 10 to 20 years. So, I did also have a conversation, phone conversation with Ms. Thacker today, yesterday, one day. The, I just wanted to kind of point out the same items I went over with her, and these aren't for this preliminary master plan and zoning amendment, but they're just comments for, to think through as we're working forward of, what do we want the character of Neptune Road to look like? To hook what kind of set a bit of a rural framework? Do we want to keep that kind of moving forward as we go through? As, you know, this is one of our main entrances into St. Cloud, and one of the cleaner ones that we can help set the framework for. I kind of brought up the point of, do we need any right-of-way or pond acreage for Neptune Road widening? I don't want them, I don't want the county to have to pay undue burden to condemn property to widen Neptune Road. I want that done as soon as possible. I did like the fact that the realigning that, the school bus driveway, I see those buses trying to turn out in the morning and the afternoon, and it's scary. And then, the timing of when we'll get a light at Sergeant Graham. It's another treacherous turn, anyone that's trying to make a left out of there. And then, the, there was a bit of a detail about the 34-foot courtyard. It just, it looked confusing to me about how that would park and how it would park with our four-and-a-half parking spot requirement. But if the motion is to change this to no single family, it kind of removes that, that comment. And then, the last point, I think, is just making sure that this, once it comes through, it'll meet the commercial building standards that we put together for all the fenestration and the building envelope, and the way that the buildings look, to where it, you know, helps promote that, the better image we're trying to create in the commercial quarter.
Mr. Sturgeon, I think you and I had had a discussion where I had asked a question. I think we wanted to find out how much commercial we want to have on Neptune Road and on, on the main 13th Street here. And we need to segregate and market out what we want, and maybe that's, maybe it's a little bit too fast, Joe Thacker, and maybe it's a little bit too fast for what you're wanting to do now, for too many homes and too many cars on the road right now, until we decide what we want, where we want, what we want. And I think you're asking too much, too quick, too fast. There's a whole lot more discussion. I'd make a motion that we put this down the, kick the can down the road a little bit, until we find out what we're, what we do want to do, what we want to do.
So, you're making a motion to deny this?
To deny, to deny it. Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Did you, you said, "Kick the can." Do you want to continue it, or do you want to deny it?
Well, I'd even talked to Mr. Sturgeon, both. You and I had discussed both of them, and what I had said to you. I don't have either, either druthers. I just don't want to do it right now. I think it's too fast. You're asking too many questions. We don't know what, and we don't have the drawings of even prelims, you know? You don't have anybody that interested, so if you can wait, could you pull it, or just back off a little bit, and give us a little bit of time to get some breathing room and understand what you're doing, what you want, then we can move forward and have a staff meeting and a council meeting?
I'm happy to ask for a continuance.
Yes, ma'am.
For, you know, 60, 90 days even, and my client will probably kill me for saying that, and I don't have permission, but what I'm, to sit down with you and have an understanding. We've already, we pulled the PD&E for Neptune. We know that they might want a pond site. We've talked to Cliff Tate at Kimley Horn, you know, and where they would want it. We, so we're willing to do that. We're willing to look at architectural type standards with the fact that, you know, we don't know what that market is, but we're, we're willing to work with the city. We, we have, you know, met with staff several times. We are willing to help you all go through a process. One of our engineers has, previously Jim Sellen, who's with Ms. Hughes, has helped you all in the past on your sustainability and the walkability and those kinds of things. You know, I think that this applicant has a wonderful resource, 100 acres right there. You know, they want to do it right. They also want to do it in a way that the market would support it. The market's not going to support 100 acres of commercial, and it's not going, you know, talk about traffic. You know, that, that really blows up your traffic. I just don't think developing it as a highway business and just having commercial on there for 100 acres is, is, makes sense. And so, you know, we're happy to work with you. This is one where I'm not beaten, you know, I'm here to say, "Let's work together. Let's come up with a good product." You have a, you have 100 acres under one land ownership. That's going to be unheard of for much longer, so...
You were making a motion for denial. Are you going to change that?
But you're only going to, you're only giving 90 days. I don't know that we could get...
I'm asking...
Yes, sir.
Start.
Sorry, Mayor.
We give Mr. Sturgeon.
And I got to just make sure this is okay with Mr. Menzeros. We do have a workshop next week. There's an item that we won't be able to do, because UC is not going to be able to present, so maybe we can discuss it at the workshop next week, if we decide to have that workshop. And, and I think Andre's already done some preliminary work. Maybe we can come to an agreement of what the parameters are going to be on a project like this. Would that be?
Well, the purpose of the workshop is to discuss the particulars related to specifics being incorporated into these plan unit development entitlement and ordinances, not necessarily specifically this project, but...
Correct.
...one of the things I think that Councilwoman Matheny suggested needed to be done, so...
You can tell me you can't do it. I'm cool with that.
No, no, you're the city manager. So...
Whoa!
So...
You thought he was...
You're the boss.
He'll be here.
We'll do what, whatever you wish. But what I was going to say was, the, as Mr. Menzeros says, the purpose of the workshop would be to discuss the criteria for PUDs, not specifically the...
This project.
...layout for this project. So, because we don't typically discuss projects at...
Is that doable for next week?
Yes, it's doable. We can discuss that, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that Mr. Cooper and others don't realize, don't think that we're discussing this project.
Well, but what it would do is, it would at least set general parameters that would allow this applicant, as well as others, to work on maybe a different presentation when a matter comes back before the council, because they would be given a little bit more direction about what, in general, the council would like to see with these PUD projects like this.
Joe, I'd feel better if you didn't come back in 90 days. I'd feel better if you had a little longer than that and had more parameters, a little bit more of a rough etch-a-sketch, where I could see what you're going to do.
Well, what I'm asking is, come back in 90 days, see what you all come up with, be able to present, you know, update with my client, and maybe be able to present some things to you about what, what they're willing, or not willing, able to do. So, I'm not asking for an approval in 90 days. I'm asking just to come back and, and have the first discussion, and, you know, if we need to update based on what you all are wanting to see, we can do that. What I, what I don't want to do is start the process all over again with the application and the, you know, that kind of thing.
That's where I was trying to give it 120 instead of the 90. I just feel better.
Councilwoman Braskew?
I make a motion that we extend this out 90 days on ordinance number 201911.
I'll second it.
So, that's a continuance for 90 days.
Continuance. Continuance.
Can we get a, anybody, Linda or Ivy, can we get a, just a general date as to what that would be? What council meeting that is?
It's in September.
Especially when you hit July and August.
Keeping my budget meetings around that time.
That'd be September 12th, about?
Can we put a date to that?
Can we add a date to that? September 12th? Will that be doable? Okay.
Now, just for clarification, September 12th?
September 12th.
We have a motion from Councilmember Braskew, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 1.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Also, want to say thank you for your service, and I know these kind of meetings are hard, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Item number three?
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-24. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article II definitions in Article III, Divisions 28, exterior lighting standards of the Land Development Code, providing perseverance, conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Andre Anderson, Planning and Zone Director. This is the first public hearing to discuss the exterior lighting standards and to consider adoption. It is essentially to address any type of exterior lighting for commercial buildings. It exempts agricultural operations, single-family, residential, duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. We had a workshop on this back in January of, of this year, and we also took the Planning Commission, and one of the new requirements that the City Council has asked us is to also send any proposed land development code changes to the St. Cloud chamber, which we did. And we initially did not get any comments, but then we received comments on, from one of the members of that committee, which I will enter into the record. Because this was a new process, we did not make it clear that we wanted one consolidated comment from the committee, as opposed to individual member comments. So, I'll enter this in the record from Donna Hart, who is one of the members of the committee. Her comment was essentially that this lighting requirement should exempt the downtown and not be applicable to downtown, and that we should consider that all downtown businesses should be lit, the roof lines of all downtown business should have lighting.
Yes.
But that's the gist of her comments.
Are you done?
No. So, this code has a series of requirements, some minimum, minimum light levels, and also to prevent any kind of light trespass onto residential properties, and also that we establish some specific standards for parking areas, pedestrian walkways, and so on. It's consistent with our strategic goal for growth management, and you see on the screen there, staff reviewed it back in March, and recommended approval, planning commission back in April, and the St. Cloud chamber had no objection, but had this one comment. And City Council, we ask that you approve this on, for the first reading.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Have discussion of motion by council. Councilmember Braskew?
Mr. Anderson, the, when it comes, I think Donna Hart was bringing up some things about the downtown. When lighting does come to the downtown, wouldn't the historical board take a look at that as well, and say that's good or not good for the historical part of the downtown?
No, because the lighting is not a structural element of a building, such similar to paint. It would, they'd only comment on things such as if you're changing the, the windows, or you're changing the roof line, or you're changing some structural feature of the building. But, again, if we want to add lighting as another component, we can surely look at that.
It just seems, you know, I think we sort of broke our own rule when it came to LED lighting, by putting LED lights on New York Avenue, which is beautiful, by the way. But I think that, it just seems like it should run through that department. We set that historical board up for a reason. It seems like some of those things, like some signage issues and some lighting issues should, seems like it should go through that department.
Sure. Again, we can look at that. Again, we're talking about several different things. If you're talking about signage and it's part of the building, then that becomes something that the, that the Historical Preservation Board would look at. But if you're talking about lighting that's in the landscaping, that's shining on a building, that's not a structural element.
No, I'm talking about like Hunter Arms. They put these cafe lightings that's against our ordinance right now, but it looks, it looks very nice. It accentuates the building, and there's some other places where they put some cafe lighting in.
Again, we are happy to go back and look at that and say that we will add the lighting requirements as part of the historic review. I'll have staff look into it and see how we can address it.
It just seems like, I'm not sure what the historical board looks at, just in, when permitting comes, and they want to change the, the structure of the building or the frontage of the building. It just seems like that should be rolled into that part of it.
Yeah. And, and again, and it could. I mean, for instance, if a historic structure had a architectural light fixture that was integral to that design, then sure, if they're taking it out and putting something else in, that may be something that they'd want to look at.
Yeah. I think we've gotten this discussion before about, and it was like, I think it was Hunter Arms or something, and there was an original sign. You can go back to like 1920, and it sits up on the very top.
Yes.
But under our ordinance, you can't have a sign above the roof line of a building. But it just, you start getting into muddy water, so I appreciate you even looking into that.
Sure.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, I wasn't going to have any comment on this, but Mr. Askew just said, "I thought we had paint colors in our historic district." Because I know, I mean, I've brought it up before about having a palette of colors, because, you know, you go into downtowns near us, and somebody comes in and just paints some garish color right in the middle of the historic buildings. I mean, I would like to see us add a palette of colors as well.
So, again, just to clarify, we did have the discussion about colors, but that's for all buildings, not necessarily just historic buildings. Paint color is not one of the criteria that the Department of Interior requires or regulates.
So, you are reviewing the palette of colors and then...
We haven't established one yet, so we talked about doing that so that we could regulate colors, and that we're going to bring back, back to you.
Add that to your to-do list.
Thank you. That's two now.
Two, sorry.
That's two, number two.
I thought it was only one per week. I thought that was a...
Just a special day.
Do we have any further discussion on this item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Braskew, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Brings to item number four.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-30. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating and abandoning portions of the drainage and utility easements located along eastern, eastern 20 feet of the property located south of Mutter Road, north of Nosie Road, west of Old Canoe Creek Road, at 1913 Oakview Circle, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing perseverance, conflicts, codification, effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Planning and Zone Director. This is a request to abandon a portion of an easement. It's a 20-foot wide drainage and utility easement within a six-unit residential unit block. And initially, we reviewed this and were recommending denial, because our Public Services Department indicated the need to preserve that easement. However, we have since determined that the Public Services has no public infrastructure within that 20-foot easement, and therefore is able to vacate the requested 15-foot easement, and still maintain a 5-foot easement should we ever need it. And so, staff is recommending approval of this abandonment of the 15-foot easement.
Mr. Barclay? They're recommending approval. Are you still wanting to speak to this?
If they're recommending approval, no.
I would be real happy if I were you. Any other, anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just wanted, Mr. Anderson, to make one clarification I don't think you made, was of those six lots that you see, it's the only one that hasn't been vacated. So, there's, you know, all the other ones have already been vacated. This is the outlier.
I don't know that they have been vacated.
They don't exist.
Right, they don't exist.
They don't exist.
Yeah. I pulled up the plaque, and it's just a note on the plaque. This is all lots, 20 feet. It shows it on every other lot, but the six in the middle, so it's...
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You could stay for the rest of the...
Go home. You can stay for the rest of this exciting meeting, if you like.
Remind me, that was just first reading.
Oh, yeah.
Three more.
It'll have to be read again, but...
Oh, gee.
That was a first reading, but it'll have to come back before the council again for a second reading for final approval, unless some mysterious thing comes up, it ought to fly through. But that's not a guarantee. I never tell, I never can know what the council's going to do to that.
Thank you.
That wasn't a criticism.
Number five?
First public hearing for ordinance number 2019-39. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the St., City of St. Cloud General Employee Retirement System, amending Section 6, benefits amount and eligibility, providing for codification, providing perseverance, and provisions, repealing all ordinance in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Joe Edder, the Deputy Director for HR, Safety, and Risk Management. I'm here basically representing the pension board and the pension attorney. This ordinance provides for one-time increase in retirement benefits in order to give our retirees a 2% cost of living increase. The annual payroll, according to the act tribal report, is $13 million. The 1% increase would cost $130,000. The pension is fully funded. We have 97 point, if this is approved, we would have 97.6% full funding to the, to the pension. And the pension attorney and the board is recommending approval. I'm open for any questions you might have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do we have discussion of motion by council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you. Brings us to item number six.
Public hearing for resolution number 2019-059R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a kennel inside boarding only, used at 1118 Pennsylvania Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of this resolution.
Andre Anderson, Planning and Zone Director. This is a conditional use request for a facility to allow for a inside boarding and kennel inside use only. This was heard previously, and it was continued, and the council requested that the applicant come back to explain their position and to discuss why it would be appropriate to allow the outdoor run despite the restriction for inside boarding only. for inside boarding only. Staff is recommending approval, as we stated previously, for the boarding to allow six beds and to have inside only. I must point out that because this is a conditional use, the City Council has the ability to impose specific conditions of use. So whatever conditions you deem appropriate, it is appropriate to identify those conditions as part of this approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Leanne Freeman. I'm the attorney on behalf of Joe Tunbridge. Pets on a Cloud, 1118 Pennsylvania Avenue, St. Cloud. As you are aware, this matter was continued two months ago so we could address the council's concerns about whether or not the backyard area constitutes a dog run. I submit to you that the backyard fenced area of a particular business is not constituted a dog run. I pulled, there's a substantial lack of information available out in case law or in statute, but what there is, I've pulled, I gave it either to the clerk or to Mr. Manzares.
I'm happy to take it.
Okay. In addition to that, the applicant has also secured the signatures of area businesses that are in favor of this particular application. I can present that to the clerk. Pets on a Cloud is a pet grooming place. It's a 28-year business. Ms. Tunbridge has owned it for the last 15 years. It's always been in St. Cloud. In December of last year, it moved to the downtown area into the CBD 1. To the south is a parking lot, and then, I believe, two bars, a restaurant bar. To the north, there's no adjoining wall. I have the diagram here. is the body of the grooming facility itself. There are six parallel parking spaces immediately to the south, a parking lot here, and then the two bars to the south. On the north, you have, there is not really an alley, but it is not, does not share a wall with any, any business. To the rear is 68 feet by approximately 25 feet. It currently has a fence, probably need of improvement. The proposal, this is the front of the shop. The proposal is that on this wall, which has no windows, to put in, to have six kennels to permit the boarding of six small pets under 40 pounds. As you're aware, this went through the development review process. They said they recommended that it be approved. It went to Planning Commission. They recommended that it be approved. In going in and reviewing, the biggest concern was whether or not the fenced area constituted what was, the concern was a dog run. If you go to the table, it says kennels with inside boarding only are permitted as a conditional use, understanding, of course, that it has to be granted any conditions established by council. Kennels parenthetically with animal runs outside are not permitted. She's not asking for a kennel with outside runs. We're talking about six small animals or six kennels, and we're talking about supervised on-leash exercise for the dogs twice a day. The idea behind this particular facility is that you're allowed to board these small animals only and then only go outside for brief periods of time on leash supervised. If you go to industry standards, you'll find that a dog run is considered a separate enclosure. Very typically, it has a cage on the top, has caging on the sides. Very often, it has an asphalt finish, or it has, it's very securely attached, but it's usually on its own. When you think about an animal run, you think about things like the Osceola County Animal Shelter, where you have a building where the animals are housed, and adjacent to each of the kennels, if you will, is a chain link fence that extends into the outside to permit the animal to go out and exercise. Dog breeders, canine facilities, that type of thing are the kind of thing you're talking about with a dog run. Gone to Massachusetts law, had to go far afield. There's nothing in Florida, defines a dog run as a securely enclosed lock pen on the owner's premises with a secure roof and sides that are secured to a floor or embedded at least two feet into the ground. If I go to case law, any reference to a dog run or an animal run is almost non-existent. There's one case in Florida dealing with deed restrictions in which there's a reference to a dog run as a separate enclosure. It's just parenthetical. It's just a mention. There's an 11th Circuit Court of Appeals case on a fair housing claim that says it's a similar separate enclosure. There's case law out of New Jersey. Again, animal runs as separate enclosures within the perimeter of a fenced property. The most analogous case is a case out of Utah where the animal run was an enclosure that was contained within a fenced yard, wherein the court found that an animal run is not the same as a fenced yard. It is a separate set aside area. This is not what we're seeking. When we look to the code and we're trying to determine, at least as lawyers do, to try to determine how to construe an ordinance, you look to similar words. And the doctrine of nositer ossosis, which means you know from words by their associates, we look at the prohibition in the code. Says kennels, outside runs. So we're talking about those big facilities that have these separate runs. This is not that, and we're not asking for Now, there is one mention of animal runs in our city code, and that's in the backyard chicken keeping pilot program, wherein it is described as a pen or enclosure or run which is required to be attached to the coop. And that is something that is a separate and apart from any fenced enclosure. If we were to say that an animal run in that instance meant the backyard, then backyard chickens could run all over the backyard. That's not what the, what the code means. So an animal run is a fully enclosed structure dedicated to exercising animals separate and apart from perimeter fencing where they're allowed to go out without supervision. That's not what we're asking for. Pet stores, for instance, are permitted as a matter of right within the CBD 1 and 2. Presumably, pet store owners take their animals outside to exercise them once or twice a day. That's not an animal run either.
Could you please move on? I think we understand and agree with you what an animal run is.
Well, I'm just making sure because that was a huge boat of contention at the last turn. I want to make sure I make a good record.
All right.
All right. In addition to that, you know, there are other conditional use permit businesses in downtown St. Cloud. The Auction House is one of them is right behind. And there's non-conforming businesses right on Pennsylvania. You have auto detailing, you have auto repair, and immediately to the south of Ms. Tunbridge's facility, you've got the Ford dealership where on any given day, it's a gamble as to whether or not you can even navigate Pennsylvania because there's an auto transport truck. It's all fine. We all accept that. We're happy to have the Ford dealership there. We're happy to have Andy's there. We're happy to have the detailing place there. I don't see that this is any more impact or any impact it has on other businesses is de minimis. Now, I've talked to a couple of people, and I know my client has as well. And I, I got a continuing concern which is, it's going to be a dangerous precedent if you allow grooming facility, or the grooming facility to have kennels. And the reasoning was, well, what about the next person that comes in and wants a kennel for 40 animals? Well, what's stopping them? You're stopping them. They still have to apply for a conditional use permit. You control the number, the density, all of those things. You have within your power the right to impose restrictions that make it compatible with, consistent with, the downtown area. So we ask that it be approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name is Fay Anita Bott, and I live in the City of St. Cloud, but I conduct business out of the building that I own at 1006 1008 Pennsylvania Avenue, and I have a grooming business. So I just want to say that I have no issues whatsoever with anybody, especially if they own their own building, exercising the right to free enterprise. However, based on what we're trying to do in downtown St. Cloud with the revitalization effort going on, I personally don't feel that having a boarding kennel is conducive to that. However, if that is approved, I certainly will welcome it and congratulate it, and then probably be submitting my application to allow boarding within the facility that I own. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? For the record, could you share with me how many people signed the, you said they were local businesses?
Yes, they're all on Pennsylvania Avenue, and there's a dozen or so, so I'm sure she knows.
All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Bob Beecham, 1105 New York Avenue. I'm not going to go into long detail. I mentioned to you guys before, it's kind of a plan for downtown and what we want to see downtown and not see downtown. I got concerns with it. The downtown business group as a whole has said, we don't want it. I didn't go around and poll every person downtown. We probably have 100 businesses down here, so I didn't do that. But, you know, I guess two questions that I had. One was, it was to you, Mr. Trace, you'd mentioned, and I couldn't get up and say anything more because you got your three minutes and you had to get up. One was, you had said, I think it would be good for downtown, providing it was done properly at the last meeting. I have no idea what you meant by that. Have you seen another kennel in a downtown? Or what, how are you making that reference? That was my question to you. And to you, Ms. Matheny, because you were kind of for it, I guess, you know, and even tried to change the ordinance saying that you should do the dog run kennel or whatever, you know, which can't be done like that, you know? And I couldn't get up and say anything. I mean, you know, you should know, you sit on council, you can't just change an ordinance by saying, hey, let's just change that. I thought that was very unprofessional of you to say it that way, you know? And, Mr. Mayor, you kind of suggested to keep things going, and the only thing I can say probably good is, I think you were trying to take a very positive approach and just say, hey, go do your homework, do things, come back. I think we shouldn't vote on this right now. And that, and I would hope that you would give every person here that same opportunity, you know, if it came. So I don't want to beat this. You know how I feel about it. And I hope you guys just make a good decision whichever way you go.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Just like to reach more, just rebut those comments or...
Can we rebut at the end?
As you're aware, the code allows for this as a conditional use. What I'm hearing from those who object is that we don't like it, we don't want it, and that should be enough. That just renders that provision of the Land Development Code annul it. If you have a conditional use and you can apply for it and meet whatever conditions you set down for it, then it should be granted. Otherwise, you need to amend the whole code and take that conditional use out. So, thank you.
Thank you. If both of you are going to speak, could you come on up so that you're at the, at the podium? Thank you.
Hello. Carrie Hansen, 505 East 19th Street, St. Cloud. I also have a business on 11th Street, 1221. My concern is, one, I don't consider a 40-pound dog to be a small dog. If a 40-pound dog is defecating outside two times a day, plus the dogs that are being groomed, I don't know how many come and go, but they may need to as well. My concern is the feces, the smell, possibly stepping in it and tracking it through the city. I have other concerns, but there are other people that will represent that. Mine is feces. Lucky me.
Thank you. State your name and address?
Dwight Loding, let's see, 1117 Pennsylvania Avenue. I am president of Downtown Business Group, and we had a long discussion on that. In, in our group, we meet once a month, and it was unanimous that the group does, you know, doesn't feel that this type of business is the kind of business that we want downtown St. Cloud. And, you know, we just heard about something about conditional use. I, I think that is something that maybe the council, and maybe there should be a workshop sometime down the line. If, if you look at historic downtowns and their revitalization, there are certain types of businesses that bring back downtowns, and there are certain types of businesses that hinder that. And I think we need to keep looking at the type of businesses that revitalize our historic downtown. And maybe in our conditional, conditional of use, we, we make, we make a plan. In the seminar that I was in, they suggested that the city itself meet with realtors that lease out properties and also the owners of the buildings in these downtowns so that everyone's on the same page. So that is something I think we need to look at, maybe before you vote on this situation. But as far as, I, I do have some concerns with a kennel. The feces, as someone else had mentioned, the runoff of that, I don't know where that's going. That map, I did see as far as parking. That building doesn't have any parking except for in the rear. The side, those six that they mentioned is on someone else's property, so please don't consider those. Let's see where am I at here? And I don't think it's fair to the pet. That's a small facility. It's a small area, even if they do have an area in the back to walk that particular animal. Who wants their animal in a, in a building with no windows? And, and I think of my dog, you know, I love my dog, and I would not want him to be in that type of a situation. So I'm just going to leave it at that and let someone else talk.
You said you had a petition?
No, no. I don't have a petition.
Thank you.
But...
You said the chamber members' business?
Oh, the DBG.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we had taken a vote and...
It was starting.
Thirteen businesses that were against it?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Jaclyn Watkins, 231 Wyoming Avenue.
Could you pull the mic down just a little bit?
I'm sorry. Yes, sure. Thank you. I apologize. Okay, 231 Wyoming Avenue. I have a copy of what I'm going to just like hit on some keynotes if y'all want them. You don't have to have it. I'll go...
That's fine. Give it to the clerk.
It might look, it might look a little messy. I know that they were asked questions. Number one, I think boarding and grooming places are great. They do need to exist. But I'm on a very weird note going to speak totally on behalf of the dogs. Number one, I own dogs. I know, laugh at me, please. Anyway, anyway, since we were able to mention law and statistics, I wasn't able to find the statute. But there are states in the United States where kennel waste water is considered an industrial waste. There are fees. There's legality to disposing of that. And here, we just sat here and listened to everybody talk about industrial frickin' waste. And now, it's like, okay, so we're going to have this. Now, I love the pets. I have pets, had dogs, got friends who have dogs. I go walk them, you clean up. Number one, where they urinate, it has to be cleaned and hosed. These kennels that they're talking about are enclosed. Number one, there is no land for these dogs to be free to run. So as a homeowner, you have that right to take care of them in a proper way. But if you're putting them in a kennel and they're essentially in a closet, number one, the dogs have no daylight. They have no natural light. As a dog owner, I went to kennels, like for example, when I lived in Charleston, I checked out three different ones that had a proper facility for my 55-pound little mixed dog because I wanted the dog to be able to go outside. I also chose a kennel where it was manned 24/7. So if it's 24/7, essentially, your dog is like in another home because these people are watching them 24/7. I think I heard the thing of walking the dog two times a day. I do not know any dog that only has to urinate or expel a food intake only two times a day. That's just unheard of. When I had my dog, I walked Lacy when I woke up in the morning. I woke her before I went to work. My friend went and walked her at lunchtime. She went out and did a pee after. I got... I got home from work, that's number four. When she had her dinner and she drank an excessive amount of water after dry food, she went a fifth time. Sometimes, again, depending on the movie I watched, and then possibly again before 11 o'clock bedtime. That cannot be provided at a strictly indoor kennel. So my concern is for the well-being of the dog. Number two, in the city, we have this thing that's happening, and we're spending money, and you guys have already approved the money on New York Avenue. Pennsylvania is going to get better, excuse me. So anyway, basically...
Thirty seconds, wrap it up.
Noise, we're having concerts. So here's what's going to happen, you're going to have dogs in there, and if I were a dog owner, my dog is in there, and y'all are going to allow concerts, New Year's Eve downtown, then as a pet owner, you're violating the rights of the pets.
You wrap it up, ma'am.
Well, you can read the notes.
Thank you very much.
It's not fair to the animal what you're thinking about doing, but their business is great, and we do need them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is anyone else want to speak to this item? Counsel, discussion, motion.
Quick, quick.
Counselor Cooper.
Thank you. This pet run in the back, my question, I asked the staff, you're going to take two or three parking spaces that your pet groomers are going to normally park, where are you going to be parking after you do this? If we allow you to do that, where are you going to park these other two or three cars back there? I understand you're going to tell me, you can park it downtown, anywhere you want to park it, but you're just taking two or three more parking spaces away from your customers, customer next door, customer across the street? That's, I don't know where you're going to get...
I understand, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. The vehicles will be parked there, and the outside area exists now. So they are still parking on their premises, they're not using up any street places.
Okay, and the last question, that's an old house that was built there, probably 50 to 60 years ago. I know when it was built. The insulation in that house was never, never put in there to start with. Well, excuse me, it's a commercial.
It's cement block.
It was for a doctor's office at one time. So I knew what it was, never was insulated, it's going to be not soundproofed, the barking at nighttime, you've got next door that they've got bars right there, and it's going to be people making noise and trying to congregate, and you've got dogs that are going to bark, 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 bark all the time. And to me, at nighttime, that's not fair to the animal, to be just bark, bark, bark. I'm sorry. So I have a problem with that. And now that you're wanting 50-pound minimum?
No.
Or maximum, excuse me?
Forty pounds, and again...
Forty pounds, excuse me, forty or fifty, that's a big, that's a big dog to me.
We're willing to accept whatever restrictions the council wishes to impose, that's part of the conditional use permit process and the legislative control that you have over granting these types of permits. There's a skylight in there, so daylight's not an issue. It is insulated against sound, because right now, the dogs bark when they're in to be groomed, and you cannot hear them in the parking lot. As far as the feces is concerned, they're already policing the area, and they clean up whoever's mess. There was a gentleman that came in anecdotally just the other day that said, "There's some guy walking his dog, and he's pooping in front of every single business." They went out there and scrubbed the sidewalks clean, wasn't their customer, but they did it anyway. They're responsible people. Ms. Tunbridge has been in the profession of the dog business for many, many years, and this isn't her first boarding facility. She does agility trials, she'll be representing Osceola County at agility trials down at the Heritage Park just later this month. So the idea that they're not going to be treated humanely is concerning to us.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Trace.
So to answer Mr. Beecham's question about adequate and proper, I didn't want any dogs unmonitored in a fenced-in area, just outside running around barking. So we have the commitment that they'll be on leash. I didn't see the backup have any change in any of the language of mandating that the dogs are on leash or at least monitored.
No, but you certainly can impose that as counsel. I'm fine with that.
Because I think this is, this is one of those services that we should have downtown. It's really tough to find dog kennel facilities, and as long as it's run properly, and usually folks that spend a lot of money on their pets will make sure that it's run properly or it won't be successful. And then, Mr. Manzares at our May 9th meeting had a question about the ability to add enforcement to a conditional use. Is there anything we can add to this to, if they're found outside of the bounds or whatever restrictions we put on a conditional use, can it be pulled quicker than 30-day notice, this and that?
Well, with a conditional use permit, if you establish conditions in it, specific conditions, and those conditions are violated, then essentially the city has the ability to pull the conditional use permit. And then what you have is a building, a business that would, in this instance, would continue to operate without an appropriate permit. So it becomes a code enforcement issue, and the building, and the property owner is subject to fines if they're not in compliance, so...
So there is...
There's enforcement methods that can be written into the conditional use permit, yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's all my questions.
Councilmember Askew.
Terminology of dog run. What is a dog run?
Are you asking me to write the definition?
Well, I'm the one that brought it up the last time, and we were talking about a conditional use and an indoor boarding, and then when we got into the discussion more about, we're going to let them outside, they're going to be in a fenced area, blah, 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 and then I said, "Well, dog runs are not allowed." It states in CBD 1, that dog runs are not allowed in the downtown. What is a dog run? Is a dog run a fenced-in area where a dog is free or walking with a leash?
Well, you have some information that would say that a dog run is a completely enclosed, arguably enclosed on all sides facility, almost like an independent self-existing structure associated with, you know, a primary use. So that's the information that's been presented to you. We have not, I haven't found anything that would specifically identify a dog run otherwise, there's no definition in the code that I'm aware of that deals with it, but that's the information that's been presented to you today. I think on this issue, that one of the things you have to remember is, when we look at these sort of issues related to entities like, or businesses or residences like this, there's a primary use and there's an accessory use. And what we look at is, what is, is an accessory use appropriate to the primary use? And we've talked about that before in other instances. So if you are going to consider a conditional use permit that would allow boarding, then the question you have to ask is, what is an appropriate use for appropriate accessory use to the primary purpose of the boarding facility? It would seem frankly impractical to have a boarding facility that did not have an opportunity to allow animals at the boarding facility a place to relieve themselves. That just would seem... So in that, using that fairly common sense approach, there would seem to me to have to be some sort of external piece attached as an appropriate accessory use of the primary uses a kennel or a boarding facility, not a kennel, a boarding facility.
So we have, we have two choices here, and I'm not an attorney, and I don't pretend to be one. We can approve this conditional use and deal with the dogs going to the bathroom in the back, because she's stating that dog runs are allowed, and you're basically telling me that it's going to be hard to deal with a dog run in the back. If it's not totally fenced in and people are walking their dogs back there and they're going to the bathroom, that we can't basically stop it.
Excuse me, Councilmember...
Hold on a second. The second part to this, if we, if we, we have two choices, we can approve it or not approve it. And if we approve it, then we're going to have to deal with the consequences of approving it, and that is going to the bathroom with dogs and stuff in the back of that area. If we don't approve it, then we don't have to deal with the consequences of anything of the indoor boarding. I have no problem whatsoever with the indoor boarding. I guess I'm, I just listened to everybody in the downtown, they're worried about dogs going to the bathroom on the outside of the building, and they're, they truly, they haven't met with me even though I'm directly right behind them. There was some challenges with dogs going to the bathroom in that immediate area, but not lately. I'm just more worried in the future, is this going to be something that we're not going to keep up with, or... So there's a couple of things there, but part of it is, we can approve it or not approve it. And if we approve it, we're going to have to deal with the dog situation in the bathroom on the outside of the facility.
Well, and I agree, and I understand now that, but I remember, your threshold issue with any conditional use permit is the number one factor in your list, and it's in your ordinance. Is the conditional use consistent with the general pattern of land development within the zoning district? Then you go to next, is the conditional use consistent with trends of development in the area or neighborhood as opposed to being detrimental to the area or the neighborhood? What you're asking to do, deal with is address a boarding facility. You have to look at the area, you don't look at anywhere else in the city, you look at the area where it's intended to be, that's the purpose of a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit basically says, your zoning category permits certain uses. Conditional use, other uses are permitted with a conditional use permit, provided that they meet the six criteria that's in your code, and the first two of which are specifically related to the zoning district and the development in the area and the subject area. So you have to look at that first. So before you get to all the stuff you just talked about, some, the council has to make a decision about whether this is the right use for that particular, for this particular area, where this property is located, and the neighbors to that property.
Okay, I reached out to code enforcement and asked them about some, how do they deal with issues of dogs going to the bathroom? And they, they deal with that challenge all the time, especially with residential. If one neighbor's not picking up their yard, code enforcement's hands are sort of tied, they can't really do too much, because it's private property, and they really can't do anything, the neighbor has to deal with it on the other side.
And I would just say for a little further, if you reach, get beyond that threshold point, and if your concern is, how is the property going to be maintained, then there's appropriate conditions you can put in the conditional use permit. You can, and we can enforce those. And to the extent that the council wants to move forward, I assure you, staff will enforce those, because we know it's important to the council. But those can be, that can be included in there.
If we do a conditional use, I would, I would refer to something that would be yearly, something that we can sink our teeth into. I know that there's, you brought up some things about Pennsylvania, all those are grandfathered in, they walk away, they'll never go, come back in there. Andy's Auto, for example. So that conditional use, I just want to make sure, if we're doing something like that, that we do have some teeth, then we're not stuck again where code enforcement's just constantly going down there, and really, we don't have anything or anything to say about the property. And then everybody else around them ends up suffering. I'm on the whole other street, so...
You're on the same side of the street, aren't you?
Do we have any other further discussion from the council?
Can I ask you earlier, if you'd let the other member speak for one more minute?
No, ma'am. Do we have any other discussion from council? Are y'all ready to make a decision?
Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, this is Andre.
I'm sorry, Andre.
No, no problem.
I'll let you speak.
Thank you. I neglected to mention that I did receive a written document, which was an objection from the downtown business group in writing, voicing their objection, and I'll enter that into the record. Just to recap a bit, what I've heard so far, as far as if you are inclined to approve this conditional use, so far I've heard at least three issues that could be conditions, one of which is a sound barrier within the building, the second is limiting to six pets, and I'm presuming less than 40 pounds, or less than 20 pounds, I don't know what the number would be, but it seemed that 40 pounds was not acceptable, so I don't know if you want to do less than 20 pounds. And then I also heard about an issue of monitoring and being on leash for relieving themselves. And there's also a item related to enforcement, code enforcement of the condition, and whether or not it would be enforced immediately upon violation of any of those conditions. That's what I've heard so far.
Do we have to state that leash attached to a human, so it's not like you're just putting, you know, leashes out there? I don't know, I mean, that's not my...
Well, but however, if you, if you want to get back into the discussion about a run for it, it would seem to me that a rational way of looking at it is, a run is where the dog is allowed to run off a leash without any sort of human restraint.
Right.
So either way, you know, because you do see runs that have pulley systems in them, and dogs get, they're on leashes, and they get to run up and down, if I've seen those. So it would be appropriate if you were, is that the, to the extent that you permit this, and there are going to be conditions on it, that it does, would require essentially a human on, walking an animal on a leash, under direct control of the animal, direct control of the human, or whichever's better. And but to get, to Andre's last point, to the extent you put conditions in any conditional use permit, and we've had some discussions about this on the staff level, we will, you will start seeing, in when these items come back, specific language in these ordinances that deals with the enforcement issue, and our recommendation would be that there'd be language in it that would, in the event there's a violation of any conditions, that the matter is immediately brought back in front of the city council for revocation of the conditional use permit. And that would give the, that would give whoever the entity is that was granted the permit, the opportunity to come here and stand in front of the podium and explain to you why they violated the conditional use permit, or didn't violate the conditional use permit.
All right. Andre, do you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Does the council have anything else? Somebody make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, that we do not have a dog run in downtown.
So you're, you're making a motion to deny...
The dog run, just the dog run right now. Everything with it?
Help me, Mr. Manzares, that doesn't...
We don't.
Well, you're, the application is to operate a kennel with inside boarding, so that's what's before you. Application for a conditional use permit for a kennel with inside boarding. So there isn't anything specifically related to dog run. If, Mr. Cooper, your motion is to deny this, then it's a denial of the proposed resolution.
It would be for both or one?
For operating a kennel with inside boarding. The business that exists on the property would be able to continue to exist exactly the way it is, but the, they would not allow boarding, inside boarding.
Okay, all right, I'll make the motion, that we, no, no dog run, but we could have the kennel inside, no larger than 20-pound dog, no more than six, and insulated, nobody could hear it outside at any distance. That's my motion.
Is it a yearly condition?
Yearly, if you want to. We can go back and visit it every year, if you want to listen to it.
So just so I'm clear, so your, your motion is to approve, but with no outside fenced area, six pets under 20 pounds, and sound barrier inside.
Yes, sir.
Is that everything? A yearly, a yearly, yearly conditional use, okay.
Yearly.
And yearly review by the council?
Yes.
We're going to have to do this every year?
Every other year.
Or maybe if there's yearly review, if you get a, if there's a code enforcement issue.
So, yeah.
We've, we've tried that, well, I'm sorry, did we get a second for Mr. Cooper's motion?
Do I have a second to his motion?
Mr. Cooper, if you'd let me add the enforcement provisions that Mr. Manzares talked about, of if there is a violation, then it comes back immediately?
Absolutely, no problem.
So no yearly review, just if there's a violation of what Mr. Cooper just went out?
It'll come back quicker, quicker.
Okay, so I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, he said 20 pounds, did you hear that?
20 pounds.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do, I don't know if that's going to work, I mean, my dog's under 20 pounds, but if he eats too much kibble, he's going to weigh in at 20 pounds, so...
And we're talking six pets?
Yeah, we're talking, it's just small animals, maybe 25 pounds, that would be more logical.
Well, your motion's at 20 pounds right now, and it's been second. So it's the council going to have discussion on that.
Do we have any other discussion? Ms. Matheny, you haven't said a thing.
Do you want to add the leash attached to a human to that?
Well, there's no outside, anything, so it doesn't matter.
Go outside.
Well, they're going to have to go to the ba, so you're saying they can't go to the bathroom outside?
They're going to have their kennel inside.
I thought you were just saying they couldn't have a fenced area.
That's what it says.
But there's nothing stopping them from walking the dogs outside anyway, regardless if they're getting groomed or...
We can't stop them from doing that.
So it's just a leash law? No, it's just normal leash law.
You're saying no fenced area, because that means you have to remove that.
Mr. Mayor, we're at discussion among the council with regard to this stuff, so let's try to keep, try to keep some semblance of order, so...
So, they can't go, I'm, yeah, I'm confused now.
Well, based on the current motion, then there isn't anything that would prohibit the walking of animals the way anybody else in the city gets to walk animals. So whatever's consistent with the existing city code with regard to how people walk animals, and that's what would apply in this particular instance. If you want to add more than that, then that, this would be the time to add more than that.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Askew?
Okay, let's get this all straightened out here. So we have a no outside run, we have six pets under twenty pounds, let me know if I'm doing something wrong here.
You're right.
And, we've had, if basically, if the code is broken in some way, or the conditional use is broken in some way, it comes back immediately in front of council or future council.
And sound, sound barricade.
And, oh, I didn't get that one, sound barricade. What is that, what does that sound barricade mean? I'm not, I don't understand that.
You can have it insulated inside of your block walls. It's not hard, not real expensive, you can get it done.
I think what Mr. Cooper's motion said was so that it wouldn't be heard outside.
So you don't hear.
So they'd have to take whatever measures would be necessary, whatever they feel's appropriate, so it's not heard outside.
Your ears or my ears? Whose ears?
Yeah, whose ears?
Well, it don't come with the most.
That, if that happens, that will be what you decide in this, Barry Chambers.
So, when you say no outside area walking, and to bring up Ms. Matheny's thing, is that, and if they are outside, they have to be on a leash? So they can't be in that back area? I don't understand.
Well, I, I think Mr. Cooper said no fenced in run.
No runs.
I think that's what he said.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be, there would not be accessory structure with fenced in for, as an animal or a dog run.
Okay.
I think that's what your motion was.
Yes, sir.
And to help you on your fence, that's actually my fence.
No outside fenced in area. That's the motion. Any other questions?
No.
Can I call a question now? Your light's still on? You're done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Oh, who gets to write that one up?
I do. That wasn't part of the motion.
If they break the code, you're in trouble.
That's, Mr. Trace's motion was that if there's a violation of the conditional use permit, it'll be brought right back in front of you.
Okay.
Two second, two second again.
Two seconds. Motion, my second.
Okay, Trace.
Trace.
I'm sorry. Motion was by Cooper, second by Trace. Okay, we're at item seven, I think you also want council action number seven, also read, action number seven, right?
That's correct.
Seven and seven.
Public hearing for resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one oh four R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, making determination of parking spaces required by single-family dwellings located at Seventeenth Street, east of Orange Avenue, west of Crawford Avenue, north of Nineteenth Street, St. Cloud, Florida, further described in the body of this resolution. Request city council's approval of the Camden Day, Camden Bay preliminary subdivision plan.
Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This is a request for a parking determination. And what that is, essentially that if there is a parking requirement that an applicant is unable to meet or wants to change, they have the opportunity to come before the city council and request a waiver or variance to that requirement. In this instance, the Camden Bay preliminary subdivision plan, that's, that you will hear in a minute, they are requesting a parking waiver, a parking termination, I should say, for their ninety-unit townhome subdivision. They're proposing to have townhome units in there with single-car garages. And the current requirement in our code is for four parking spaces per dwelling unit, and to, which would be two in the garage and two in the driveway, and for one space for every two units, essentially four point five parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to have three parking spaces per dwelling unit, and an additional parking, half of parking space for what they consider visitors or guests to the project. They have identified a plan that has a layout that shows the location of the designated parking spaces in the project. You'll see there are a few parking areas within the project. They also have designated some parking spaces on street, well, that are set off and not within the drive aisles of the roadway within the project. So, again, just to recap, they are requesting three point five parking spaces, which would essentially be one in the garage, two in the driveway, and half a space within the project per, per unit. It's consistent with their strategic plan goal, staff recommends approval, and the planning commissioner at their meeting also recommended approval, and asks that you also do the same. The related item to this is the actual preliminary subdivision plan for the project, which is a thirteen-acre par, parcel with the ninety, ninety-unit townhome subdivision. And this approval is contingent upon your approval of the parking determination, again, for ninety single-family attached units, which is approximately six point five dwelling units per acre. And this is the layout of the project, which is similar to the graphic you saw previously that shows location of the parking lots within the project. It's considered with strategic goal, staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plan. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
I don't think I've been up this late in a long time. My name's Jimmy Askew with Askew Huey, twenty-five East Thirteenth Street, Suite Nine, St. Cloud. We agree pretty much with everything Andre said, but I think he misread the quantity of parking we're proposing. It is true, we're proposing three spaces per unit, plus an additional one and a half spaces per unit, for a total of four and a half spaces per unit, within the combination of on-street and the parking lots. And we've spread the parking lots out to where they're kind of accessible by everybody. So, the only part of the code that we're really requesting wa, waiver from is the, kind of the four per unit, four spaces per unit, but we're still meeting the total four and a half spaces per uni, uh, yeah, four and a half spaces per unit. So, that's the parking determination part. And then as far as the PSP, you know, if you have any questions on that, we can hopefully answer some, answer those.
Thank you. Would anyone in the ordinance like to speak to this item? Wait just a minute, Gus, you'll be second.
Carrie Hansen, five oh five East Nineteenth Street. I live just a few hundred feet from that, and I know everybody hates all the growth and everything, but we've lived here for thirty years, and it's always been a pretty rough neighborhood. Raised two kids in it, one got involved in bad stuff, one did not. Since the houses have been developed around there, the neighborhood has changed drastically. So I'm for it.
Wow. Well, thank you. Mr. Odom, state your name and address for the record.
Augusta Odom. I live at sixteen twenty-one Orange Avenue, and I'm also the president of the East St. Cloud Nakusi, Nak, East St. Cloud Nakusi progressive outreach program. So, a lot of concerns. We, we're not against the community going in there. We're not against that, but the concerns we have is on what Mayor showed me on his computer the other day, that there's two entries, one on, on Seventeenth Street there. And the concern we have about that is where about on, on Seventeenth Street, that entry's going to come out because of the park, you know, Hopkins Park there, with the kids and everything there.
Do you have anything else? You'll answer that question in a second. Do you have any concerns?
Yes, and second question is on the entrance that's coming out on Orange Avenue. The sidewalk situation there, you know, there's a partial sidewalk on the, I think the west side of the street, but there's nothing on the east side where the community is going to be, and where the kids has got to come out and walk down the street. Thank you.
Can you address the issue of the traffic where it will come out onto Seventeenth Street adjacent to Hopkins Park?
The entrance of Seventeenth is directly across the entrance into Hopkins Park. So it pretty much aligns up with, with the entrance as requested by, I think it was requested by staff that we make sure that entrance lines up. And pretty much the geometry of the property, you don't have much ability to, to change that entrance at all coming off of Seventeenth. And the same goes pretty much for the access off, let's say, Orange. Pretty much right across the other access to the west. So they line up and as they, as they should. So, the property's pretty constrained as far as access goes, and we felt it's better to have two access points, obviously, to give the residents multiple ways to get in and out, same with emergency and police and everything.
All right. And you asked a question about sidewalks.
I think we, we do show the sidewalk along the property frontage, along Seventeenth, and we show, I don't have the, the plan right in front of me, I think we show sidewalk along Orange. So, that's pretty much typical when you develop a, a site that you improve along your property frontage.
All right. Thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, I think Mr. Askew clarified the concern, the confusion I had, because your slide, a couple slides back, I thought you had a typo on it, because when I had my gender review, it was, I was sold three and a half parking spaces. Yeah, so then your slide was right in the, okay. The second question I have is, and maybe I'm in the wrong part of the world here, but I know at one point we were looking at some regional lift stations out in this area. Is this, is this going to require a lift station as its size so that other communities? I, I think the one we were looking at before, Diana might remember, I thought it was over on like River, River and Bibbins or something like that. And so we were talking about maybe trying to like, do a regional lift station so that we could potentially like, take some people off of septic. Is that something we're looking at in this area too? Are we on, are, are there homes adjacent that are on septic? If somebody could answer that?
Andre, do you know?
No, I don't know.
All right.
So there's a current lift station at the corner of Seventeenth and Orange, and many years ago, when the subdivision to the south was constructed, Benjamin Estates, that was the same time that that lift station was improved, I think, and there was some gravity sewer lines constructed along Orange Avenue, and there was a stub directly to this property because this property was actually part of a PSP for Benjamin Estates that didn't get developed back then. So this was always planned to be directed to that current lift station at Seventeenth and Orange. So, we, we haven't had any discussions with the city about a master lift station or anything like that.
That would just be something I would like to, I mean, moving forward is kind of, you know, in this area specifically, I know there's some septic in that area, and if we had an opportunity to.
Raise the.
Prepare for the future to take some people off septic.
Thank you. Share your name.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is George Arnold, and on the property, I have four years.
I'm sorry. Could you just share your address for the record?
Eleven ten Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
We've owned this for years. They redone, they redone the sewer laterals. There was, there's a small community on Nineteenth Street, which Orange turns into Nineteenth, and that was done seven, eight years, nine years ago, and they completely redone the street, put the sewer main down the middle of the street. We put a lateral off for this project at that time. So that whole sewer system over there has been done. We, we were in front of the utilities in the first meeting that we had, and they've got utilities all the way around this thing. And it, the, the laterals are relatively new, and they resurfaced the road and done the entire thing probably five years ago, eight years ago, somewhere's in there. I'm getting old, time gets by me, but yes, ma'am, it has been addressed.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other discussion from council?
I heard a clip.
Do you have anything else, Andre?
No, I don't. Just to apologize, I misread the report, but it is, they are meeting the four and a half spaces. But the reason was, is here for parking determines because our code specifically says two in the garage.
Well, now we know you're not perfect.
What is your pleasure concerning public hearing item number seven?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen one oh four R.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, second Councilmember Askew for approval. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Could we now go to the?
PSP, council action.
Council action, item number seven. What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve the Camden Bay PSP.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Councilmember Trace, a second, from Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thanks, sir. Item number eight.
Public hearing for resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one one three R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number two thousand eighteen dash one fifty-three R, which adopted the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget for the city of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Wendy?
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Obviously, we're presenting twenty nineteen dash one thirteen R as budget amendment. Moving slide here, sorry. Some highlights of the resolution here, under the general fund, we are requesting twenty-seven thousand to the public safety divisions for chest compression systems, soft armor shields, and AEDs. Some miscellaneous revenues were received for insurance proceeds, and those are going towards twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six to the public safety divisions for vehicle replacement and reimbursement for trainings. And under media services, a capital equipment expenditure for thirty-four thousand from the council contingency to the general fund for video streaming hardware and the software solution requested. Moving on to the capital project fund, a hundred thousand from the one percent fund contingency will be used for the fleet maintenance software in order to properly track all vehicle and equipment costs for the city. Any questions before I move that slide?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, ma'am. How much money is going to be left in the contingency fund for the council after this?
Well, you always catch me on the totals, Councilmember Cooper.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that.
You know what, it's week three, so it's a good test. We are using, well, forty thousand, I don't have the total to tell you here, but forty thousand from council contingency. Does, is it okay if I ask my, my budget? She may know off the top.
Absolutely.
Dawn, why don't you come up? I think she's getting her papers first.
We tried to prep for every question, and this was one we didn't, right?
I would do that.
Did you ask how much we're using, or how much is left?
How much is left?
It's a little over seven point four million in council contingency, which is basically your fund balance reserves that we brought forward. How much of it that we're using for the general fund is thirty-four thousand?
Could you step up closer to the mic, make sure you're heard?
It's about seven point four million dollars in council contingency. And you're using thirty-four thousand for your media services, and six thousand dollars towards the insurance proceeds to go towards the new vehicles. And that's it from the general fund.
Okay, excuse me. Some of that money that was going towards the vehicles was where we had a accident and we had to replace it and no insurance?
No, the insurance proceeds came in, but it's not enough to completely.
That's why, ma'am, it didn't pay for it.
Yes, it's for the, correct.
We had to step up and.
A little bit more.
Okay.
Okay. That was
The 1% fund.
Fire department or?
Yes, sir, for the fire department. $10,445 came in from the insurance.
All right, no problem, no problem. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you. Continue.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, slide two. In the water fund, $180,512 for new meter installations. The cause of this is higher, we needed higher growth cost within the service area, tap fees, we needed to recover the expense of the equipment and the installation cost. In the sewer fund, $156,000, new reclaimed meter installations are higher than the budget again due to the growth within the service area. Tap fees recover the expense of the equipment and the installation cost. So obviously, the growth caused us to request for this budget amendment for this to cover the growth within the service area. Any questions for that?
I thought we had enough meters ahead. We don't keep enough that far ahead?
My answer to that at this point, no, we didn't. Obviously, we're asking for more. I can find out for you what we can do to alleviate that in the future, but I'm assuming, using logic that we're asking for a little money, no, we did not get enough.
Okay.
You know, and couldn't assess the growth at that time.
So maybe we can look at that and see if we need to
Yes, sir, project that out a little bit more due to the growth. Yes, sir. We can do that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure when we, if we change the budget on that, we don't This is at least something that's covered wholly by the cost, like the cost is covered by the tap fee coming in.
The tap fee's
I don't want to overbudget things like impact fees, and if those don't come in, they affect balancing things in capital funds, so I just, I just want to make sure we're careful with that. I'm fine with this type of transfer because it's something that covers itself.
Sure.
Instead of overbudgeting for something that might not come in, and then we're in a deficit later.
Yeah, I want you to watch it, both ends, both spectrums.
I could definitely do that. Like I said, I'll get well versed in order to see if we can get a sweet spot for it to where we just don't overbudget it, but know, and can kind of project hopefully the growth that we have versus just overbudgeting later, you know, so I'll definitely look into that. Let me make a note.
You're jumping right at it. Very good.
You know, to the adapt and overcome from the Marine Corps, I guess. Here we go. The medical insurance fund, $588,000, and the simplest terms I could tell you is that the claims are projected at double the amount, so we were projected at $250,000, and they're coming in at $448,558. So the appropriate thing is to make sure that we take these estimates or projections of what's coming in and prepare to fund that medical insurance fund, so that's what that request is for. These are the estimations based on the actuary, and it's just the fiduciary thing to do to prep for that. You know, we take their expertise, and that's what the claims are coming in. That could be various reasons why our demographics are getting older, claims, we, you know, we don't have that entitlement to know what the claims were for, but the right thing to do is cover for that, you know, based on the estimates that came in.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We weren't running that, we weren't running behind like that, like we are now, right?
No, sir, it's not a, yeah, it's not a behind
I thought we were up to date.
We sure are. It's just that actuary reports come in at a certain time right on June, and so we can't project, you know, how many times somebody's going to get ill or what type of illness they have, and those are the claims that are projected to come in.
It hurts.
It does, and it's, yeah, it's, it's hard, but I think that the city's really well-prepared to impact that, so like I said, it's just really hard to pinpoint that.
I just want to point out that when we had that intergovernmental meeting between the school district, both cities, and I think the sheriff was there, the county, the school district is about a million dollars a month that they're over on their, their health insurance because they're self-insured, and that's how much they're funding, about a million dollars a month over what they budgeted.
Can we maintain a contingency for this type of action once actuarial comes in? So we have contingency to move over to cover this.
Okay, but then we're budgeting more for next year as we're going through.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Didn't they say when we've reviewed these kind of issues before that it's kind of cyclical, like, like we'll be doing really, really good for years, and then it's like, then it's like all the claims come in, so it's kind of like a six-year cyclical, I think it was seven.
Yes, ma'am.
See, I listened to you. It's a cyclical thing, so I think we're just
Yes, ma'am, and you know, a little bit of background coming from the health industry, I will tell you, that's an epidemic coming around, and it's really hard to target, but, you know, like I said, our demographics deem that as well, so our employees are hopefully keeping themselves as healthy as we could, but, you know, it is six-year cyclical most of the time, so.
Councilmember Raske.
So this is your first time on the podium in front of us, isn't it?
Yes, sir, this is actually my three-week anniversary, so.
Welcome, you did well.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, the final slide, staff recommends approval for the Resolution 2019-113R.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do we have discussion, or could I have a motion from council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
This brings us to council action. We've already acted on item number one. We need to do a switch. Could you please read item number three first?
Resolution Number 2018-119R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of agreement between the City of St. Cloud and Toho Poligla Water Authority related to water wastewater and reclaim services and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Diana Rowley, Public Services Administrator. Let me get to, we got it, thank you. Resolution 2019-119R is a bulk purchase agreement for water wastewater treatment and reclaimed water. This agreement will be in effect for 20 years or until the city's infrastructure reaches the part of the city that we're trying to service, which is located on the map. The agreement is between the City of St. Cloud and TWA, Toho Water Authority. We have a development that is wishing us to provide service to them that we do not have the infrastructure out there, so we are bringing forward this agreement and seeking council direction as to approval or denial of said agreement.
Thank you. Is the developer here would like to speak to this?
This is actually for TWA. Todd Swingle from TWA is here if you have questions regarding
Todd, you want to add or you're just here for questions?
Unless you have questions of me.
First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. This is what I talked about with you. I think it was just to pass the bills, that's what we're going to be doing?
Yes, we, we would purchase the water and the wastewater treatment services and reclaim water from Toho Water Authority. We would be paying them for that, but we would just be managing our customers and charging them our typical outside our service area rates until such time as development brings infrastructure to the area or
I got you.
The city builds it themselves.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, I have no problem with this. Toho's a good partner with us, and we've done this before in the past, so, yeah, I think it's a good thing. We're not going to be out there for a while, I don't think.
Hopefully before 20 years.
Right.
Councilmember Trace?
I just wanted to just add a quick question that I thought of after, after I had my briefing. Who's keeping track of the, in section, before section one and subsection eight, there's a unit count limitation? Who's keeping track of that? Is that us or Toho?
We will keep track of it through the, when the meters are set.
Okay. So that's just, that's a well-known thing, and I just don't want someone coming back screaming going
Yeah, no, they'll apply for the meters through the city, and we'll have the subdivision marked for the, no exceedance beyond the 40 for the first two years.
Okay. Yeah, because we wouldn't be approving building permits.
That is correct. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Raske?
I didn't see any annex letter for water agreement. Is there one that's been
There was in there.
It's in the, it's in the agreement, the, which is the item that was skipped over. When you go to the next one, that has an annexation, which ties the property.
Just double check. Can I make a motion that we adopt this, please? Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
If you'll please read item number two.
Resolution Number 2019-118R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement for Equity Pine Glen LLC, a residential development named Pine Glen, located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County on the south side of US Highway 192 and east of Old Melbourne Highway and west of Breezy Pine Road, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement and providing an effective date.
Resolution 2019-118R, DRC case 19-19.01, is a request for a water and wastewater service agreement by Equity Pine LLC for a 293-lot residential development located on the south side of 192, east of Old Melbourne Highway, west of Breezy Pine Road. They're meeting all the city's requests in the designs, standards that we usually ask, the 25-foot setback. Each single-family residential lot shall maintain four and one-half parking space, four and a half parking spaces with two in the garage, two in the driveway, minimum of 1,500 square feet of air-conditioned living area excluding the garage. They will have variations in the architectural facades. Their air conditioners will be offset, and they will have a minimum of two trees on the lots. The crosswalks will all have ADA-approved tactile surfaces, and the homeowners association governing documents shall include prohibition of on-street parking, except where the parking has been incorporated in the design by Osceola County. This is the basic layout. There is a 20-foot alley, but they are meeting and exceeding our request for an 18-foot wide alley, so we have no issue with that. We have determined that we have capacity since we have now just approved the TWA agreement. The applicant had a couple of items that they amended to the agreement that are not included in your packet. I can read them, I've read them, and I have, Public Services has no disagreement or does not have issue with it, but I'll read them to you.
Can you just put them up on the, the easier for
The first one's the what? Section 1.4?
The first amendment is typical. If we ask them to upsize, we would come in with a line agreement, so the request is not anything we take exception to, and we are okay with this if they're putting it in the way of a typical on-street parking and not parking on the street that's taking up space in the drive aisle. So I believe that is the intent of this with that. So the applicant is here. If you have any questions, we are seeking direction from the council in the way of approval or disapproval.
Would the applicant like to speak?
My name is Brock Altifer. I'm with Osceola Engineering. I'm representing the applicant. My address is 1003 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. On the revision to, I think it's 1.4, the first one you put up there, I mean, I know you can make the argument later that you meant the differential, but I'd like it to be clarified that, because it says the city will be responsible for this cost, I would like it to say differential.
Are there any objections to that?
Yeah, I mean, just to make it completely
I understand.
Clear. The city will be responsible for the, you know, for the differential between the costs.
Difference between, right, got it.
Yeah. I know that's what everybody means, but just to not have an argument five years from now would be great.
Any other questions or discussion? Kind of entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with that clarification to section 1.4 that it's for the cost differential.
I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four.
Resolution Number 2019-121R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending schedule of local business tax fees pursuant to Part II, City Code, Chapter 40, taxation for local business tax, Section 40-163, schedule of local business tax, and amending the schedule of certificate of use fees pursuant to Part II, City Code, Chapter 12, Business Articles for Certificate of Use, Section 12, 12-136, schedules of certificates of use fees of the City Code for a purpose of processing applications pursuant to the requirements of the City of St. Cloud's code, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. Since the City Council approved the first public hearing to change the method by which we would establish or modify fees, this is the resolution to establish or reestablish the fees as a resolution and to also take the opportunity to address the opportunity for a 5% increase per Florida State Statute 205. And this, as I said previously, allows the council to view this, make this increase every two years or every other year. Again, this is an automatic ratchet of the fees, it's, it still has to go to the City Council for consideration. As the slide indicates, this, the last time that we did increase our fees was back in 2014 through ordinance, 2014-12. And so this is the first time in five years that we are looking at adjusting the fees for the BTR, which is the business tax receipt. It's consistent with the strategic plan goals, and staff recommends approval. The current fee for BTRs is 56.28, and the increase would be approximately $2.81 to a total of $59.09. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name, address.
Hewitt Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Maybe this is the time I was trying to make the point that we have small struggling businesses, and I really am not in favor of even a small, 5% is not small, increasing and putting in that additional burden on our existing businesses. You know, they're not posh, a lot, these are struggling companies, struggling businesses. People work hard, and I don't think we should increase his taxes on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Discussion by council? Do I have discussion or motion?
I'll make you a motion. We don't do it for, it's not enough money to pay anything that we're using now. You told me we're paying for two, two or three employees down there, the building department?
And the planning, yeah, the revenue generated is approximately $177,884 for fiscal year 17-18.
It's tough for, it's tough for businesses to keep in business right now. I make a motion, we do not, we do not charge that.
Second. We have a motion for denial from Councilman Cooper, a second from Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Item number five.
Resolution Number 2019-122R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Adventist Healthcare Systems, Sunbelt Healthcare Corporation, a commercial development named Cobblestone Commercial located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County on the south side of US Highway 192, north of Neptune Road, east of Parton Settlement Road, west of Oak Street, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Diana Riley, Public Services Administrator. Resolution twenty nineteen one twenty-two R, DRC case nineteen dash twenty point zero four, is a request for a water and wastewater service agreement from Adventist House, Health System for their property located on the south side of Highway one ninety-two, north of Neptune Road, east of Parton Settlement. It's outlined there in the red and highlighted in the yellow. This is the general layout. It is for a standalone emergency services facility. This is their architectural rendering. Public Services has reviewed the request and determined we have capacity at this time for this development. The applicant has requested approval of said agreement under Resolution twenty nineteen one twenty-two R.
Is the applicant here?
I am not sure if they are.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Discussion or motion by council?
Motion approved, Resolution twenty nineteen one twenty-two R.
Second. We have a motion for approval from Councilmember Trace, second by Mr. Askew. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six.
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one twenty-seven R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, renaming the portion of Rommel Road east of Narcoussi Road to Center Lake Ranch Boulevard, pursuant to requirements of the inter-local agreement with Osceola County and providing an effective date.
Sorry. So, this is a request for a name change of a portion of Rommel Road, which is east of Narcoussi Road. It is the entrance to the recently approved Center Lake Ranch project, and the applicant is requesting that the name be changed as part of their marketing strategy for the project. This name changes are handled by Osceola County nine one one addressing, and since it is, it's within the jurisdiction of the City of Saint Cloud, the city has to act on the requested name change. Representative from Osceola County nine one one addressing is here. If we have any questions regarding the process and how the name change came about or the request, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff is recommending that, that it is consistent and that we recommend approval of the change of that portion of Rommel Road.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, just for the record, so the police, the fire, and nine one one all support this name change?
This item went to the DRC, which includes fire and police, and no one identified any objection to the request.
Okay.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Just a quick question. It looks like the name change changes in the middle of Rommel Road? Or does it change right at where you turn?
So, if you're going south on Narcoussi Road and you were to make a right, you would be going to Rommel Road. If you were to make a left, you'll be going to Center Lake Ranch Boulevard.
Yeah, but I see this drawing, and it looks like to me the center of it is going to be Center Lake to the center of part of, yes or no?
That's just probably just an ill-drawn graphic. The point is, the name changes from the intersection. I maybe now can, can speak to, speak better to that, but as I understand it, if you're going south, if you're going north on Narcoussi, and you make a left, it becomes Center Lake Ranch Boulevard. If you're making, I mean, if you make a right, it's Center Lake Ranch Boulevard. If you're making a left going north, it would be Rommel Road.
As long as you stay on fifteen and you, you're going north, it's still fifteen going through that?
Fifteen is not changing.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, this drawing kind of looks like it to me. I'm sorry.
Again, I apologize for the graphic. It's probably ill-drawn.
No problem. As long as you tell me, we're okay. Thank you.
You done?
Yes, sir.
I move the adoption of this and approval of this resolution to nineteen one twenty-seven R. I have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We've already approved item number seven, item number eight. Well, we, we beat, we beat the crowd on that one. Number nine.
Discussion on possible action regarding the appointment to the Saint Cloud... Discussion on possible action regarding the appointment to the Saint Cloud Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee and appointment to the, appointment of the chairperson and vice chair.
Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to add a prayer for one of our police family who's very ill tonight, not going to make it through the night. That's why Chief Gauntlet had to go to the hospital. We just got bad news. It was, it's not a law enforcement officer. It's an employee very ill and not expected to live through the night. So, he sends his regrets that he couldn't be here. As you know, we've, we've talked about this at several meetings. We need Mr. Cooper to make an appointment. If you would kindly do that to the Public Safety Committee. And in addition, I'd like you to consider something else. I'd like to amend the resolution that we passed several weeks ago. We've got some feedback from the community, and, and one of the things in our mission statement talks about it being a vibrant and, and diverse progressive community. And I think one of the areas that we've neglected, and I'm going to take responsibility for it, is we didn't look out in our community and, and make sure we had a diverse panel of people. We have a very diverse panel as far as expertise, but I think the minority community is underrepresented on that. And so, I'd like to have another one or two ad hoc positions on the committee to represent the community a little bit better. Just, just a suggestion.
Councilmember Cooper, first of all, you have a...
Appointment.
Appointment.
Ms. Crumpler, if you would take this job, I would have...
Do you want me to respond?
Yes, ma'am.
Hewitt Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, Saint Cloud, Florida. I'm going to make very brief comments. The process, this process of, for me personally, was a bumpy one, okay? And I think it could be improved tremendously in that how the people were appointed. It was painful up until yesterday, through yesterday. I think what would have made it better is if you guys did what you usually do when people have a, a committee. You let them nominate themselves, fill out an application, and you guys make your selections. And I think a good idea would have been for each of you to pick two people and, and then whatever other people you want, have the, the city manager do it. That's just that my input. Also, I think it's, I did ask the question, and I was told that I want to make sure the meetings are videotaped. I want to make sure we welcome citizen input. I was a proponent of the diversity, and I still am. And I, I would like to see a pretty clear definition of what's being, you know, asked of the committee. I really haven't seen it. But to answer Mr. Cooper's question, I'm going to take the advice of my favorite CEO and decide to, it's better to engage, so I accept the offer. And I'm going to close by saying, I will do what I ask all of you to do every time. I will do my very best to make sure I represent and do what's best for the citizens, all the citizens of Saint Cloud, and I'm honored to, to participate. Thank you.
Mr. Mazzaras.
Just remind the council that council several meetings ago adopted this committee and set the parameters for the committee. It's a very unusual committee. It's not set up the way any of your other committees are because it is a limited-purpose, limited-duration committee established by prior resolution of the council. So, but if you are going to make changes of it, we're going to have to amend that resolution.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in support of the diversity. I would also like to point out that we only have one female on this committee. And even when you look at staff, there's not even any female staff on the, for the police department.
Councilmember Mazzaras.
Did you just promote me?
City Attorney Mazzaras.
Because I don't want your job. I would just, well, whatever happens, I think this process, just from a, from a perspective of time, has been going on for, so I, I think if you're going to add additional seats and you're not going to make those appointments tonight, that at least there's enough to have this meet, this committee to start to meet, to get going on this project.
So, what do you, what do we need to do in order to add more diversity?
Well, right now, your, your, your resolution was adopted, has nine or eleven? I can't even remember.
Eleven.
So, if you want to increase it, I would not suggest that you increase it to an even number. So, if you want to increase it to thirteen, then we could, we could likely, if you want to make that motion tonight, we could probably do that and incorporate it into an amendment to the prior resolution again because this is a limited-duration, limited-purpose committee with no authority other than recommendation authority. And, but we do still also need to address the issue of, the resolution provides that the chairman and vice chairman of the committee will be appointed by this, by this council. So, we need to do that so at least the meetings can start.
Getting, oh, kind of, Councilmember Trace.
In my mind, I'd rather get this right than get it done right now. So, everyone's bringing up good facts about there not being enough diversity on here. So, it's either we add people to the list or we have individuals reconsider their, their nominations.
I certainly don't have a problem with adding people to this and having more diversity on, on the thing, and, but asking people to step aside that you've already asked to serve, that would create a conflict, in my opinion.
If you want more diversity, that's kind of the two options.
Mayor, typically, these type of committees, you know, people can't come sometimes. So, I think if we have a larger committee, you're still going to get good work. And, and I think if we expanded it by several seats, focused on that diversity.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Can we provide, or I don't know what we need to do logistically here, but could, I mean, I would be fine with the city manager nominating two people, just as you did the first, was just coming up with two additional people, taking the number to thirteen. Can we add it? I guess, do I need to make a motion to add it to the agenda to make that revision to our...
Well, no, it's, it's on the, it's an agenda item today to talk about it.
Okay. So, I, I would support just having the city manager come up with two nominations to add it and take it to thirteen.
With consent of the council at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper.
And I had another point, but it just lost my...
Thank you.
Welcome to old age.
The appointment of the chairperson and vice chair. My, my suggestion would, would let the twelve or, or eleven or thirteen people to nominate their, themselves the first thing when they sit down and let them, let them pick from the, themselves, not from this council members.
Well, can we deal, first of all, with the expansion of the committee?
I have no problem going to expansion on it.
Do, all I need is consensus.
Well, we need, we would like, since there is, we'd like a motion to, to increase the, the eleven-member committee to thirteen.
I make a motion for thirteen.
Do you want to, do you want to wrap the self-selection, if, if everyone feels their way, self-selection of chair and vice chair into that?
It's up to the mayor.
I don't agree with that.
You don't agree with that?
No, let's wait, let's deal some separately. We have a motion that we expand by the, this committee to thirteen from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
I just wanted, for a point of clarification, is that for the city manager to appoint or for the council?
The city manager to make nominations to come back in front of the city council at the next meeting. That was how I understood. So, the council, as with, the city manager would bring back nominations. They'd be subject to final approval by the council.
Thank you.
That was said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Now, is the issue of chairman and vice chairman?
My, my question, where I feel like it should be the fairest from the members themselves, let them, let, let them have their first meeting and go ahead, first, out of the gate, choose their own.
Well, as the change of the resolution, did not the original resolution say that we would accuse the chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, this whole thing got started from a, a city manager and from a police chief that the, the staff, this whole thing's driven by the staff. It's not from the council.
We approved it.
Yeah, we did, but, but it was already done, handed to you and said, here, take it. You didn't have any choice.
I respectfully disagree. We have every choice in the world. We could have turned down everything. We could change the whole thing. We adopted it, and we approved it. The, the question is, a chairman, do we have any motions for chairman? Oh, your light is on. It's been on forever.
You gotta keep, you gotta, it's on, it's off, it's on.
It burns out.
I would like to make a motion for the chairperson to be Bob Hansel. I feel like, I mean, who better to chair this advisory committee than him? Think we, if, I think it's a home run, he's on this committee.
Want to throw a vice chair in there, too?
Vice chair, I'll say Ray Stangle.
Second.
We have a motion that the chairman be Bob Hansel. We have a second for Ray Stangle to be the vice chairman. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
No.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Mr. Attorney.
Go back, right there at the podium.
Hammer time.
I hate to do this to you, but we're going to have to back up a little bit.
All right.
Okay? Item number four, which was the resolution that adopted the business tax receipts, and Andre mentioned it to me earlier.
Oh, we have to set the rate.
We actually, what, what, what the motion was to deny the resolution, but I think, we think the intent of the council was to deny the increase of the existing fees. But versed on, based on the ordinance that was adopted earlier in the evening, you, that essentially removed those, the existing fees from the code under the understanding that there would be the resolution that adopted them. So, by denying the resolution in item number four, you basically arguably eliminated all the fees. But I think the intent was not to raise the fees.
Not to raise the fees.
So, we'd ask for just a, basically a, a motion to, to, to basically re-adopt Resolution number twenty-nine, twenty nineteen dash one twenty-one R, but keeping the current fees in place the way they are today.
I also move that we keep the current fees in place and that we not increase them.
I'll second.
I have a second for Councilmember Cooper. Any discussion? Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? No. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
And I have one other item. You have a, there's a workshop scheduled for a week from tonight. Unfortunately, due to my, to a schedule, a trip that I had for, for a professional issue, I will not be here, and I know there's a lot of important issues on it. And with the indulgence of the council, I don't know if it's able, I can be here on that Wednesday the night before to have to participate in the workshop. Of course, I would, would like to be there, but I understand the council has various schedules. So, I just wanted to raise that as, as an issue that, so I can't...
You could be here Wednesday?
I can be here Wednesday night.
Nineteenth.
Yeah, whatever Wednesday is.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
My phone tells me the dates.
Are there any objections to us moving that workshop to Wednesday? No objections?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, sir. I have three quick items. First off, Mayor and councilmembers, as you know, I recently advised the council that I was pursuing a position back in public safety. The position of being a metro-class fire chief has always been intriguing to me. Last week, I also notified you that I was not successful in obtaining that position with Osceola County, and I would pursue, pursue other public safety positions. After meeting with citizens, family, friends, coworkers, colleagues, and elected officials, I feel that my work is not done here, and I know that I have many bright days ahead, and I would like to remain part of that journey. I am committed to staying on as your city... I am committed to staying on as your city manager and would like to continue to lead this city into a bright future. So I wanted to say that publicly. So thank you for your support. The second thing is, we have that workshop next Wednesday. And one of the things for discussion is lobbyist discussion. I wanted to know what you guys specifically wanted to talk about. First off, the legislative session has moved back to January next year, so we're gonna be, I don't know, short. I wanna make sure we're prepared for session. Do we want our lobbyists here? Do we wanna review session? Do we review our successes and failures? Do we wanna talk about lobbyist contracts? I think we do need that discussion as far as cost. We spend about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars a year on lobbying costs. So I need, I think we should have a discussion about that, you know, where we wanna go. Do we need a federal lobbyist, things like that? So I just wanted some direction so we can be prepared or have the right people here Wednesday night.
Discussion by council, recommendations? Councilmember Trace?
I think all above of what you just described. Talk about federal lobbying, state lobbying, our successes and possible failures over the past few years, not just this year, just to see kind of how we've progressed. And then, you know, if if the lobbyists or current lobbyists, whether it be through LA or through the ones we have contracted, if they wanna be there, that's fine. I mean, it'll be a public meeting. And then I guess discretion up to you if you want to, you know, actually invite them or I guess everyone else, if you if you really want them to be there or not. But I think, you know, we need to put it all on the table and put a strategy together of how how we progress through lobbying efforts or if we don't do any lobbying efforts moving forward.
I'm agreeing with all you just said. Does anyone else have any input on that?
Nope.
Is there any disagreement?
No, ma'am.
Does that give you enough direction?
And I'll ask the clerk if she'll invite the lobbyists to attend and we'll make sure they're here. One final thing, August fifteenth through the seventeenth is the Fort Lega Cities. We need to appoint a delegate and it's at the World Marriott Center in Orlando, so it's not a big travel. So one of you.
Well, I'm already going.
So. It's up to the, last year, we just had the council select a delegate.
Have to go for policy or something.
Got it. I will let them know. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
All right. I would just like to say that I'm certainly pleased with the fact that you're staying. I, I'm so disappointed to hear that you were leaving and I'm glad that it didn't work out. I think you've been a tremendous asset to the city. You've been a solid leader. I know you've had a lot to learn. I know you've had a lot of challenges and a lot of pressures on you with all the things you've had to deal with in your life. But I'm I'm certainly thankful that you're staying here and continuing on as our city manager. And I look forward to continuing to working with you.
Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Trace?
Just being quick, I just wanna congratulate the deputy fire chief and PIO for their graduation from leadership Osceola this week. Nice event and I appreciate their commitment to our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
You're just jumping all around.
Yeah, I'm trying to mix it up.
Well, I had lunch with the city manager the day before he changed his mind. So you guys owe me a debt of gratitude for talking him into it. I think it was the thirty-seven times I'm like, are you staying? Did you change your mind?
Every time.
He's like, I'm trying to eat my sandwich. Also, I wanted to say today I had the unfortunate experience to have interaction with the fire department for Osceola County and the city of Saint Cloud. You know, you always hate that day where you have that interaction. We had a fire at a family home today. And I will tell you, it's a scary phone call to get, but when I got to the to the house, you know, they had everything well in hand. And, you know, it is what they say, like, kind of the worst day, you're interfacing on the worst day. And, you know, they really did a great job. And unfortunately, the Saint Cloud Fire Department was gone before I got there, so I didn't have an opportunity to say. But everything turned out great. Everybody's okay. You know, things can be replaced, all that, all that good stuff. The lightning around here is no joke. So I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate everything you guys do.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, I'm not gonna hit you too hard, just a little bit. Three or four, two months ago, when you said, I'm gonna leave, my heart stopped. It's like, you're gonna leave? You're gonna go to, but he wanted a better job. And I understand what you like and what your heart is, where it was at, and your thinking was positive. So I had no problem. But the staff, the council, we sat here and we agonized what to do. It wasn't easy. We were ready to get a headhunter and go at it. And now that you've changed your mind, you know, you called me last Friday, and I was kind of relieved. But at the same time, please don't tell me again that you're gonna leave a week from now or a month from now. Be dedicated and be forceful to be a hundred percent for the city and for the citizens and for this council. If you do that, I have no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I agree.
You agree with me?
I agree, sir.
You shake my hands after we get on. Okay.
Thank you.
Another question. Bill, if you can tell me downtown, where's where's the music?
So.
You know, I asked you last time, I'm a dog with a hump.
No, that's fine. We.
I don't quit.
We actually have found a wireless system that we're gonna try. So we've actually run the chases and things for the wiring. We think a, I wanna say Wi-Fi, but a wireless system may be better and we got one we're gonna try.
So you can write it down, you won't forget it and we'll stay on it?
Yeah, it's actually, I've got an email that said that it's been located and I think it's been ordered.
Okay. And the last question, I'd ask you probably a couple of months ago about the lights for Lake, for Nolte Road.
Right.
I understand what you're telling me.
Very expensive, so if council wants to.
Could we, wait, is there any way that we could get OUC to work with us? Or can you, let's ask them. It's very dark along Nolte Road.
I heard it from.
Anybody that goes through there, and if your car, you're female, elderly people and it breaks down?
You're not pointing at me for elderly.
Not yours. Not elderly, female. If it does, you've got a problem.
I would check it. They do have a lease purchase program. And if the council directs me out, I will go talk to them and see if they wanna do that. Now, it is very expensive and I heard it from my wife. She drives that road, but she comes from Lake County.
It's very dark.
It is dark. So again, just to point out, there's really nothing out there. I mean, so.
If you have a flat tire and it's, I mean, it's dark city. You know, and that's the corridor going back and forth through there. So sooner or later, we need to get some lights somehow, way, shape, or form. Can you just expand and see what you can find? Give us two or three different choices.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Would you guys like me to do that and come back to the council with some options and pricing?
I appreciate that if you could.
We, OUC. We'll do that.
Thanks, sir.
Can I tag in?
Uh-oh.
To one thing. I'm sorry, I'm elderly. I forgot this.
Young lady. Young lady.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I met with you and OUC like a year ago about taking down some of these extra poles that are on Tenth Street. And then I followed up in an email with the gentleman we met with and I also said something to Chip, whatever, I forget his last name, at OUC.
He doesn't work there anymore.
Maybe that's why he didn't back to me. But can we, can we find that out? I mean, there is just a proliferation of poles on Tenth Street.
There is a lot of poles.
We met about the guy about the pole.
Yeah, and and he told me they were gonna take them down and none have come down, but can you follow up on that, too?
I know Virginia Avenue right there, Tenth Street, I had said something to you one other time about it's awfully hard to look to the east if you're gonna cross north on Pennsylvania or on Vermont Avenue.
Right, that's because they relocated those metal poles there.
That is.
Yeah, they.
Can they trim some of the, I mean, it's right on the sidewalk there. Could we trim on an angle so we could see a little bit?
I thought we did. We did it, I think. I thought we did it.
I didn't think we did.
Okay.
Could you check and see on that?
I will.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Askew.
Just a couple of quick ones. Bill, can we look into that roofing loophole in our code that we're not allowed to re-roof our own buildings with metal? And can we get that changed?
Yes, sir.
We're on it. Just to bring council up to, I was walking on Lakefront and we re-roofed two buildings down on the lakefront with asphalt shingles. And I'm asking myself, why in the world would a government agency put asphalt shingles on our own assets? Then we found out there's sort of a little loophole in our code that we can't put metal on our buildings. So if we can just tidy that up and fix that, so we don't have to do that ever again, especially before we re-roof Virginia and Tenth Street.
Yes, sir.
I like how the way Dan's like, what in the world are you talking about?
Bill, you're gonna be ready to.
It's a little weird thing in our code that he, I don't know. I mean, if we can just fix that, tidy that up, that would be great. The other part is, I think I'm in agreement with some some of our citizens is that if you're retired staff, I think that you shouldn't come back to work here. I think you should wait a year, just like council would have to wait a year if we leave. Is that something, if council is sort of in agreement to that? Now, if there's a special occasion or somebody is so needed out there, they should be able to come in front of council and say, hey, look, we need this person in this spot. They just retired. How do you guys feel about that?
Yep.
Does that sound like something you guys would be in agreement to?
Absolutely.
I will come back with a policy for the council.
And part of that will take the, end up taking the pressure off the city manager. I think that that's sort of a good thing. And I'm just saying this for the downtown business group because they are all over me. If we can get some kind of map of the standard for New York Ave and all events that are being done there, it's all about this turning this tent thing around, that would be fantastic, I think. Before the Craft Festival comes in front of the DRC, that would be great. And can we change the name of the DRC to Special Events? DRC Review Committee? Because as Bill knows, the DRC, in their eyes, meant that it's a special event, DRC. They all showed up today for this event. I didn't really know anything about it. But if we called it a Special Event Review Committee, they would know it's part of Special Events, not DRC Special Events, DRC this, this. Is that something we can? I'm sure Andre can, we've had that conversation. So if we could just get that changed, you won't get that little bit of confusion there. That's it for me.
Got it. Thank you.
Just wanna say once, one more time, thank you, Diana Rowley, for your service to our city. I'll be praying for you as you leave us to go work for the city of Saint Pete. Again, thank you very much. Would just like to also say that Charlene Kuhn has left us. She left us quickly and she was our grants administrator, worked for us for nine years and she will be greatly missed and in my prayers also.
She she went and got another job, right? She didn't just leave.
She had another job. Yeah, she had a good opportunity, but she was a real blessing. She didn't leave under any bad um circumstances.
No.
Brings us to our information section, report section. Wednesday, June nineteenth, if you'll make that correction, two thousand and nineteen, will be our city council workshop at six PM here in City Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, June the twenty-seventh, will be our city council meeting at six thirty here at City Hall Council Chambers. I'd like to remind all of you of our reports, the warrant list number thirteen, the approved finance committee minutes for January two thousand and nineteen, the approved recreation advisory committee minutes for April two thousand and nineteen. I don't see any lights on. With that, we are adjourned.